All people may work together in true fellowship and may serve thee in unity and in peace. As we ask in your holy name, amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get underway, I'd like to recognize some people that are in the audience. The, from the Boy Scout troop number forty-two, which is from Saint Luke's Church. And they are here this evening. They may be joined by others, but Bill Vogler and Mrs. Vogler and Jake Patterson, the scout, and the Voglers are counselors. And they are here on behalf of observing the workings of the Lee County Board of Commissioners relative to the earning of a merit badge in citizenship in local government. So, welcome. It's nice to have you here. And we hope that we set a good example for you tonight and that you learn something. Now, as we look at the agenda, fellow commissioners, are there any additions to the agenda at this time? And if not, is there a motion to accept the agenda? Before you, it's been moved that the agenda be approved. As it appears, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you very much. Now, for approval of the consent agenda. You've had an opportunity to look that over. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda? It's been moved that we can, that we approve the consent agenda. Yes, sir.
Before we approve it, there were a couple of items that I'm wondering why we didn't just add them to the consent agenda. Page eighty-two, page...
Item D, new business, annual contracts with the Triangle South Workforce Development Board and the appointments to the Rural Transportation Advisory Committee.
I had another one that there was another question about that.
Okay. Mr. Crompton, you wanna, I mean...
I don't think there's any problem unless there are questions by the board on either, either matter.
Okay, there's no, there's no problem here. And if the rest of the commissioners are willing to put D and E over under the consent agenda, we can do that and approve it as amended.
I think it just needs to be understood. I have a look from the clerk that Ms. Darrell will still be the appointee.
Okay.
That was not on the consent agenda.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll leave that in. Is that okay? We're gonna have to, okay. But D, D would move over to the consent agenda. And is, was there some other question, Mr. Reese? All right. With that amendment, if it's your pleasure, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, we, we have no public comments tonight. So, we will move, we'll move right into new business. And speaking to us this evening will be Patricia Witt. And welcome.
Thank you.
And I believe that you are going to be, you're, you're of the Sir Optimist International Raleigh. Did I say that correctly?
You did. You did that very well.
I practiced. Almost blew it. Please, welcome and proceed.
Okay. We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. We want to bring forward to your attention this, a topic that's something we're not real happy that exists, but we think there are things that are impacting our community. And the good news is there are things we can do about it. So, we'd like to bring it to your attention and talk about it. And then I have an invitation I'd like to issue to you. So, first just to know what is human trafficking? It's been labeled modern-day slavery. It's a violation of human rights and it is a crime. Fortunately, we do have laws now that make it a crime. The first law is the one passed by the US government called the Trafficking Victims Protection Act of two thousand. And this one, it defines what human trafficking is in the legal sense. And the key words here are force, fraud, or coercion. Now, you know, we do have the Thirteenth Amendment that outlaws slavery. However, it did not cover these aspects of slavery, the fraud particularly and the coercion. And anyone under the age of eighteen is automatically concerned, defined to be a victim. So, there's no need to prove the force, fraud, or coercion. So, the, the areas that this law covers is prevention, protection, and prosecution. And our main focus as a nonprofit organization of professional women whose mission is improving the lives of women and girls locally and globally, we're concerned with ending violence against women and girls in particular. And so, we're working on the prevention mostly, where we help bring public awareness and education to the citizenry. But the protection and the prosecution are both very strong and that's a real positive. So, what is the concern? Why is there a concern? It's a very lucrative criminal activity and it is growing. It's the fastest-growing criminal activity in the world. And the estimates are it's a thirty-two billion dollar opportunity each year. And the scope is that there are approximately twenty-seven million people worldwide who are held in human slavery. Eighty percent are female and fifty percent are under the age of eighteen. So, half the victims are children. So, that's very alarming. And we think that's the international number. The local domestic numbers are a hundred to three hundred thousand. American children are at risk and they come from shelters and the street, street children. What kind of work do trafficking victims do? Well, you can see on that list some that exist in our area. And so, it's the types of things, the lower paying, of course, types of labor. And who are the victims? Primarily vulnerable people, uneducated people, runaways, gang members, immigrants, a lot that we can identify in our communities. So, where does it occur? Well, a lot of people think it's over there, but I'm sorry to say that it's over here too. It includes the US. It's a clue. The statistics now are showing that it's, in the research, are that it occurs in every, just about every country around the world because it's so lucrative and it's low risk. So, it's right here in North Carolina. And I know you've heard of several situations that have occurred in North Carolina recently. But why would North Carolina be in the top ten? Well, we're strong in tourism, so we attract that lower-cost labor, agriculture. We have a good international population, so people can stay under, just beneath the surface. And we have military presence. We have outstanding interstates and secondary roads, so it makes it easy for them to travel. And the traffickers do move their people frequently, especially those that are being extirpated and sexually. And our position along the Atlantic seaboard makes us a good stopping place between Florida, where people come in, and New York, where a huge destination point is. Some people think that victims are willing participants. They're not called victims in that situation. But they're, they're conditioned through this force and coercion to convey that in a lot of such situations. Smuggling and human trafficking are the same crime. That is not really true. Trafficking is a crime against a person. Smuggling, a crime against the border. So, often these terms get interchanged and we like to know that they are approached differently for investigation and prosecution, so it needs to have a clear understanding. So, there is a commercial component. And of course, these are some situations that we've heard of in the news in our own state in the recent months. But each of us, we feel, has a role to stop human trafficking. And there are things we can do in our normal, everyday operations. So, that's been our focus is citizen awareness and community involvement. And the Sir Optimist Club has been benefited by the Women's Club of Raleigh through grants to help produce this orange card, which I'm gonna pass out to you later. But it, on this card, and that's one of the primary reasons we're here, is we want citizens, we've been told by law enforcement that they need us to be the eyes and the ears to report these things. So, we've created a card that talks about the facts and then talks about some indicators in the neighborhood that you can watch for, or indicators if you encounter a potential victim, and then who to call. So, that's one of the reasons we are wanting to get a good, strong referral database. So, our challenges are that we do have human trafficking increasing in our region. There've been reports that fifteen to twenty cases were reported within the last six to nine months. That it operates beneath the surface of daily life, so we must involve the citizens to become involved, to be aware and watch, and that they're highly mobile. So, we're gonna have to have cooperation around our region because they're gonna move from place to place. So, what are we asking from you all? We're not asking for any money, so I hope you're glad about that. But we just need your help. We'd like you to help us raise citizen awareness and willingness to report these activities. And that's, we have the card here to help people know what to report and look for. We'd like your participation in creating this timely, seamless referral structure. So, that means all our law enforcement needs to be trained about human trafficking. And your sheriff has been very responsive to that invitation. We found a portable DVD that does the training and he's accepted that and indicated he plans to use it. And then, we want to adapt, adopt for our regions, and this is where US-elected officials come in. There are some best practices that have been effective and we'd like for us to examine those across our region and see how we might adopt those. So, the, what we want to do is invite you to this regional conference that Triangle J Council of Governments is co-sponsoring with us to help us establish a clear understanding of human trafficking, look at what, who all the players are in prosecuting a human trafficking case. Then have two breakout sessions, one for law enforcement, so they can know how to respond to a citizen call most effectively, and one for you all as elected officials as to what could your role be. And our date is September the first, a Wednesday. We're located in Raleigh, near downtown, so it's a fairly central place, easy to get to. And you can see while we're in volume. Our expected outcomes is that we can commit to lead the region to incorporate policies that have proven effective in combating human trafficking. There's a lot of ordinances and things that have been implemented in other areas that have been very effective. And then commit to incorporate the necessary steps to have this good referral base. So, the proposed actions are to attend the regional conference and to form a region-wide task force, so that after the conference, we can implement what we've learned there. And train the telecommunications who answer the phone calls, train investigative units, and determine where human trafficking fits into the existing response protocols across the region. And then share our information that we need to share as needed. So, our goal is to stop human trafficking and we appreciate your participation with us on that.
Thank you very much, Phil. Stick around just a moment. Maybe some, someone has questions they'd like to ask you. Would anyone care to ask a question?
Have you contacted Haven, our local, it's, Haven's a nonprofit that, that deals with abuse, women abuse and child abuse?
Here in your county? No, sir, I don't believe you have. It's called Haven.
It's called Haven. It's a nonprofit that we support.
Oh, right.
I think you definitely should, should contact them and give them a lecture too because they're, they're sort of the front lines of what you're talking about.
Right, they're, they're what we call a first responder when they actually respond to the need of a victim.
Yeah, other questions or comments?
Well, we had in our packet, it said the location is at Hope Community Church. I think you said something about Hayes Barton.
I'm sorry, that did get changed. So, your information was a little bit past, was not updated. It's actually Hayes Barton, the Ninety Methodist Church. And...
Invitation without...
I hope you received an invitation that came from the Triangle J Council of Governments. If not, I'll make sure that that gets sent to you that has the current information.
I have a question about, is this being addressed at the state level?
Yes, our state is very strong. We have some, we had a law enacted very similar to the federal law in the year two thousand and seven. And we have also been fortunate enough to receive several federal grants to different organizations, a couple of law enforcement organizations, as well as some service, direct service providers. And the FBI has a major focus in Charlotte. That covers the whole state. So, we're feeling very fortunate that if we're in the top ten, at least we're being recognized with some resources to help change that.
Well, I was just thinking about the governor and those people who have visibility. I mean, this is a very compelling presentation and problem that we have. And truly, it's, would seem to me, it's kind of under the radar and yet you know, we know it goes on a great deal. And so, in your effort, I'm sure that local, joined by state, could help to really put a light on this subject. Education is a big thing, isn't it?
It is, yes, sir.
Letting people know just how pervasive it is.
Yes, sir. We conducted a community forum in Raleigh in January of two thousand and nine. We invited the governor to open that. Unfortunately, that was her inaugural day. She couldn't be there. But we have also talked with the Attorney General's Office and with the Public Safety and Crime Prevention, Mr. Rubin and Mr. Cooper. And we're, we have a relationship with the person on the Governor's Crime Commission, Maria Fryer, who's designated to handle human trafficking. So, thank you for that suggestion. We have been working at it and we keep continuing to invite them to, to make public statements and we're, we're gonna, we're not gonna give up.
Any other comments, questions?
How much interaction do you have with local schools?
We helped...
School boards as well?
Yeah, Wake Area Health Education Center. And we partnered with them to bring a training that provided continuing education units. And we've had two in Wake County. And the second one, we had many school personnel there. Now, we have not yet gone around to talk to school boards, but that might be something in the near future.
Talking about Start Freedom.
We are also working on a project with, which the Women's Club of Raleigh. And I felt, it's all right, Barbara Sawyer, she's a member of Women's Club of Raleigh, also a member of Sir Optimists. And they, there's an international organization that has put together a curriculum for youth to make them aware, since fifty percent are under the age of eighteen. So, they start at age twelve and have a curriculum from twelve to eighteen to, to teach the students what to look, watch out for. How do these people ensnare these youth? They don't just come up and grab them and, well, some would get kidnapped. But most are coerced into this situation. And so, we're in the process of doing that. And we want to start with a pilot this next year. But going to the school board would certainly be another step and get them outside of Wake County.
I'd like you to contact our school board.
Well, thank you. We would appreciate that.
Another suggestion would be the Boys and Girls Club. We've got great leadership in our county with our Boys and Girls Club and that would be another access point to getting information.
We do have another presentation that is in more detail than this one that we could certainly, that's presented, that was created by the Federal US Department of Health and Human Services. They have a campaign called Rescue and Restore. So, we could, we'd be happy to, to give some presentations if that's something that you think would be accepted.
Thank you very much. Good presentation.
We hope you'll come to the conference. I forgot to tell you that we're very happy to have Mayor Franklin, Shirley Franklin, from Atlanta. I don't know if you're aware, but she did a fantastic job cleaning up Atlanta. I mean, it's not totally cleaned up, but I mean, she made the citizenry very aware that people were being mistreated and their, their civil rights violated. And then another mayor from Florida, where there's a lot of activity, and her daughter was actually trafficked. And that brought her into it. So, we feel we have a real strong agenda, so we certainly hope we see you there.
Be sure to call on Mayor Ollin. She's our mayor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure she'd like to be involved in this.
Yes, we, we've talked with your city councils and they were very, very responsive. They put our orange card out on their website. They got a PSA out on their website, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. May I just walk around?
Oh, sure.
Thank you for your presentation. Was eight-thirty to twelve-thirty was our time?
Okay, thanks again. The next order of business is the presentation by Mrs. Davidson regarding the twenty-ten-eleven Rural Operating Assistance Grant application.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
We need to hold a public hearing regarding the acceptance of the Rural Operating Assistance Program grant funds for the twenty-eleven fiscal year to be used for the county of Lee Transit System. The total funding for this upcoming year is a hundred ninety-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which is about a twelve-hundred-dollar increase in the employment side from last year.
Okay, let me ask before we open it up for a public hearing if any of the commissioners have any questions whatsoever.
I just have one, Debbie. There's three classifications on page seventy-four. And I was just trying to get the numbers on page seventy-six to match up. So, can somebody just point out to me?
Okay, what the, the state has a definitive, let me get, I, I don't have the pages and I hope I'm correct. Mine's not the actual agenda. I was trying to say paper. The first three on page seventy-six, the fifty thousand, eighty-six hundred, and the forty-nine is the allocation from the state. Those other funds are unspent funds from last year, as well as carryover funds that they may have had that were not used in the fiscal year twenty-ten. Those are then sub-allocated to the systems who have managed to use all of their funding.
So, anything that says supplemental or leftover funds?
They are additional funding or leftover, remaining funds that they had to be allocated in the current fiscal year. So, if you add the fifty-one-twenty-six and the twenty-eight-eight-ninety-four, you should get the seventy-nine-oh-two-oh under the elderly and transportation on page seventy-four. Am I on the right track? Then you add the employment funding and the supplemental employment for a total. And then the RGP is Rural General Public Funds, which we use fairs for that match. And that comes to ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars when you add those all together, the two.
You got it calculated, John?
I'm checking her out right now. Yes, it does. It adds up.
Okay.
Very good.
I just didn't know which of these items fell with which of the categories.
And I might let you all know that in the elderly disabled transportation assistance funding, we share this with the dialysis patients who do not qualify for Medicaid, as well as senior services clients are offered out-of-town medical when they can't get it here in Lee County. The Center for Independent Living accesses some of this. And then the employment money, around twelve thousand of that, is utilized through Lee County Industries for the clients who are not supplemented with vocational rehab funding. So, other agencies, we don't send that money to them, therefore, they are not considered subcontractors. We do it by declining balance on a spreadsheet, but they do...
Private employers, would you say, get their employees, use COLTS to get their employees to work?
I want to refer that to Sid Morgan, our transportation coordinator.
Yes, we have around twelve companies right now that are utilizing our transportation.
Do they reimburse or...
No.
They make their employees pay for it or is it free?
No, ma'am. The employees do pay for it.
Then the Rural General Public Funding, that ninety-two thousand, eight thirty-one, they pay the fair rate and then this remaining money supplements that for them. With the exception of two small employers who do supplement their employees, they're, they're, they pay one way for their employee and the other employee pays the other way. And those are two individuals that actually came out of sheltered workshop into general employment placement, which has worked really well and we continue to transport them.
So, your message is the, all employers can't about or pay it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I would think so, especially if they...
We've actually offered that to some employers and so far, we really haven't gotten it off the ground. We offer vouchers and the Employment Security Commission actually has access to those to use for individuals to get to interviews.
There's some good corporate citizens sometime will do things that they know about it and I'm just announcing it while I'm doing it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I will now declare us in a public hearing, which we are required to undertake in order to approve this application. So, are there citizens here who would wish to come to the podium and speak in favor of this application?
I speak in favor of these ones. Please stand as presented.
Yeah, perfectly in order. Thank you very much. Are, are there any citizens here who would speak in opposition to this? Hearing none. I will declare this open hearing closed. I will declare this open hearing closed. Thank you very much. And now I think it's in order to hear a motion that we approve this application. It's been moved that the application presented by Ms. Davidson and before us be approved at this time. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is page seventy-nine of our agenda packet. And it has to do with the Rural Center Clean Water Bond Supplement Grant Contract for Plank Road Water Extension. And Mr. Crumpton is gonna speak to us about that and possibly Mr. Pascal if he wishes. Okay?
This is North Plank Road.
North Plank.
And item says Plank Road, I need to make, clarify that.
Yes, thanks.
It's supposed to be North Plank Road. The letter does say North Plank Road. And we did receive a grant award of $128,160 from the Rural Center. That's an eighty percent match. So we're required to provide twenty percent. We're providing $5,274 from the remaining funds in the county's Water District Fund, money that was just left over from the sale of that asset to the city. We're gonna apply that money to this grant match. And then the rest, $26,766. For now, it's proposed that an assessment of the property owners come up with that match. Petition has been received and is at the city. It's being certified by them. So, but we continue to work on trying to find some grant funds for those property owners. We have some surveys out right now to get them to provide us income information. And if they are at a certain income level, we can make application to community development at the state level and also rural development through USDA. They could qualify for low-interest loans through them. So we're trying to make this affordable for everybody as fast as we can. But right now, we need approval from the board to go ahead and write a letter back to the Rural Center saying that we're gonna accept the grant and provide them the five items that they've listed in, in their letter.
Okay, the motion has been made to approve the authorization of this letter, which is due on August the nineteenth. Is there any discussion whatsoever about that?
Just have a question. So on this letter, John, is the county guaranteeing that full match? And then we're gonna try to find it? So if we don't find it, we're still going to be liable for that, right?
Yes, ma'am. But I feel, we feel good about the petition. And we also feel, feel good about getting some of those folks grant money who, from an income level, be able to, to qualify for a grant.
How many property owners are we talking about here?
Eighteen. Eighteen homes would be served. Plus a large chicken farmer, who actually makes up three parcels of that eighteen. So he would be writing the biggest check. He's really pushing the charge here. So he needs, obviously needs the water for the chickens.
Okay, Mr. Pascal, did you want to, you've been sort of supportive and...
I'm just happy to see that things won't fall. I'm not happy about it, but I can live with it. And I think those folks down there can too.
You're a lot happier than the first time you brought it up. You made it out and did the good. I know you're happy about that. We gonna get there.
Part of it. I'm not happy that they haven't, have to assess the homeowners when everybody else got water for $75.
Mr. Pascal, at this dry time, are any of these folks out of water now?
They're out of water for years, yeah.
And especially though this summer, it's, we're in a drought period again. Okay, well, the motion's been made, discussion's been held. Any other comments?
Can we make sure the motion includes that the capital project budget ordinance on page eighty-one be approved as well? I didn't ask that as part of the motion, but we need to have that approved as well.
Very good. That has been added. At your request, all in favor of the authorization and that addition to it, please say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you very much.
John, when you send this in, since it says water line assessments for $26,766, do you have to include a petition where they've actually said, yes, we agree to those?
Yes.
That's what you were talking about earlier.
Right. And we're also, in the letter, say that we're also looking for other funding. All they're really looking for is our commitment that we're moving forward.
Okay, the next item is page eighty-two. And Mr. Crumpton, are you gonna speak for Mrs. Potts about the...
Actually, we approved that item under the consent adjustment.
Oh, I beg your pardon, we did indeed.
We're on to item B.
Yes, yes, I was.
And I will not speak for Miss Talbot.
No, 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 no. Okay, so the next item is the appointments to the Rural Transportation Advisory Committee. And I can tell you that prior to the meeting, we spoke among ourselves and Mr. Oldham is agree, agreeable to serving as our full-time representative. And Mrs. Shook would continue to be the alternate person, which fulfills the requirement of this particular item. And so that appointment is appropriate at this time with a motion.
So moved.
So moved, that as stated. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you very much. And the next item, page eighty-seven, has to do with book sales in the library. And Mr. Matuchik will speak to us. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your time and your considering our item. First of all, I'd like to introduce two folks I've been sitting with in the back, whom you probably know. Susan Alexander, who's the chairperson of the Library Board of Trustees, and Mr. Hugh Moore, who's the president of the Friends of the Library.
Welcome.
And Mr. Hoyle, who's the secretary of the Friends of the Library.
Okay.
The Library Board and the Friends have been in discussion for several months about this idea of transferring book sales from the library to the Friends of the Library. And both bodies welcome the idea. And we are presenting it to you for your consideration. We do have a number of book sales through the year. I'll just quickly tell you what they are. We have what we call our annual book sale. We may have to get another name for that, but that's usually in mid-October. That's probably, probably our biggest sale of the year. Then our next biggest sale is in May at the Pottery Festival, where we have a popular tent for people to come buy books. We also have probably almost every month, on the first Saturday of the month, a very small sale in the library itself. A dedicated library staff member holds a small sale on Saturday afternoons, which is very popular. Also, between three and four times a year, we have a special book sale for the county employees on days in the park or wellness days, that kind of thing. They're, they're very popular. And it's not a book sale, but what else we do is we give paperback books to Sheriff Carter for the people, inmates in prison. But we don't give them any books that tell them how to bake a cake with a file in it. And no hardback books can found that as well, because they can be used as weapons. On this idea, I want to give you some, some things as content for your consideration. There's some things on one side of the ledger and some things on the other side. Just a few things, a random list, just to let you know. Book sales take our staff an incredible amount of labor and time to set up and go through donations and discard from books we take off the shelves and whatnot. So by transferring it to the Friends, they would have a group of volunteers who would do that continually through the year. So that would free up staff time. It'll also free up in part, as I've mentioned on the abstract, some of our space and storage problems. We are an 18,500-square-foot building on Hawkins Avenue. And if you remember, that federal-funded study we had, they say we need about a 50,000-square-foot building. The library will still choose those books that come to the library as donations for things that we can use to put on the shelves so we won't have to buy. So we, in some ways, get first dibs, so to speak, on, on books that are donated. Another item, most Friends groups across the state do run book sales for public libraries. Not all, but most of them do. The Friends may be able to make more revenue. They may have time to individually price items, whereas we do not. We'll have a price for hardbacks or paperbacks or children's books, as you know. What the Friends do with these funds is all back to the library in one form or another. Some of the recent things have been our question database for the Quiz Bowl. Many of those things you've seen in the newspaper over the summer, those special programs we have in the summer reading program. These are above and beyond what the library usually, usually can do. And also, there's a new aspect, a, what we're calling a future development fund. I mentioned, you know, the space problems and the square footage. This would be the Friends getting a, a pot of, of funds that in the future, when it comes to that time, that they will show their earnest money, so to speak, about a new, a new building and also to the, to the public. We're also re-energizing the Friends group. Besides Mr. Moore, Mr. Hoyle, and myself and Mr. Brickhouse, I hope to get a lot more people involved. The Friends may use a different location. We usually have our big book sale at the auditorium of the library. If you've ever been there on a Friday night when we have it, it's just jam, jam-packed, but still a lot, a lot of fun. We would also like to continue that the library would continue the county employee book sales, since they're so much fun that you could almost consider it a noted benefit to county employees. So when we have a wellness day, whatever, we're over in the corner. A lot of folks are over there getting, getting books for a real nice price. So we think that's just a little, a nice addition for the employees. On perhaps the other side of the agenda, I'm not saying plus or minus here, but say on the other side of the agenda, there may not be a great transition to the public from these book sales. But it won't be the library doing it, for the most part, the big book sales. So there'd be a, a transition there. There is, as you saw on the agenda, so we make a little under $5,000 in, in revenue on the books. There will be a partial loss of, of revenue directly to the county. But the Friends, as I say, use that, those funds for the library in many ways. Just to let you know, on, on the revenue side, about fifteen years ago, we revamped our overdoses structure. Years ago, we were making between $3,000 to $4,000 on overdue books. We changed it and then from then on to now, we make from $10,000 to $14,000. So we're, we're doing our, our little bit on the revenue side. Of course, an overdue book for a librarian is an opportunity cost, a loss for other folks to use a book. Mr. Crumpton likes it in certain ways for the, for the revenue coming in. But that's something we just instituted on our own to do that. And the reasons we started the, the library book sales about fifteen to twenty years ago were to thank the, our patrons and people of the county who love books. And we sell these books at very nominal prices. Sometimes if you can fill up a, a shopping bag or whatnot and you can hand us a dollar, we'll help you carry it out to, out to the car. So it's kind of an appreciation to the county. We may not be the revenue source, but we hope we are the goodwill source in the county. And also to help us alleviate the space problems. Also, on the other side, and I would leave this to, to Mr. Hoyle and to, to Mr. Moore and Mr. Talbot, I guess, there, there may be some legal questions. And you've seen in the packet, there's general statutes about county property being sold and whatnot. I can't answer those for you. But we are under a five, usually under the $5,000 limit or threshold they put in the general statutes. And some of that $5,000, about, oh, half at least may come from donated books. So the books we take off the shelves, which are county property books, may not get up to that $5,000 threshold. So I don't know if there's something we need to do in Raleigh or just something we need to do here with the local ordinance. That's what I have for you right now. I know, I think Mrs. Alexander or Mr., Mr. Moore may want to speak to you as well. But since I'm here, if you have any questions, I can maybe give you some answers or even more input on something I may not have, may not have said.
Okay, before you leave, are there any questions?
There's a question. I want to thank you for the job you've done over the years.
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. If you'd like to introduce your, your...
While it's coming up, I'd like to advertise, maybe we can make it. At seven o'clock, we're showing To Kill a Mockingbird at the library. It's the fiftieth anniversary. And then tomorrow at seven o'clock, we're having a discussion about it. All citizens from the county are coming and we're having a special guest. An illustrious former resident of Sanford, bestselling author Doris Betts will, will be there. I think this is an important topic, cultural and heritage, and also will take us into the future as well. So, and we'll have refreshments.
Thank you.
Do you need other donations of books or do you have plenty of books?
No, we always take donations.
Is there any market for conservative books? I have a lot of them. They're bestsellers, but I've just read...
Reverse the whole spectrum and rainbow.
A red side, a blue side, okay. Hi.
Hi, I'd just like to corroborate Michael's opening statements about the Board of Trustees supporting this request. We've had ongoing discussion for several months about how we could get more community involvement and trying to support the, the Friends of the Library as well. So we wholeheartedly support this request and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Mr. Moore?
Yes. I'm Hugh Moore with the Lee County Friends of the Library. And I endorse everything that Mike said and Susan said. Just like to emphasize a couple of points is, one reason it would be good to have this book sale is we give our people something to do. Because what we've basically been is a repository of funds for donations to Friends of the Library. When Dr. Dodder passed away, I'm sure most all of you knew, about four or five years ago, we got donations of about $4,000, which, which if you know Dr. Dodder, what he did for Lee County, what he did for the library, that's no surprise. So basically, that's what we've been. If somebody wants to make a memorial gift or an honorary gift, we receive it. And then we pass it along to the library. But it doesn't really give the people who want to help the library a lot to do. But this would give them something to do, to come and participate in a book sale, give them a little spirit of volunteerism. And, and we have virtually no overhead. Nobody gets paid anything. It's basically postage and paper. We don't have an office. There's a little, there's a little corner in my office, but there's no office that the county pays any rent on. So everything that comes in would be passed along to the library. So I think it would actually be a net positive, because it would free up library staff to do something else. And it would get volunteers involved who could, who would sell these books at no cost to the library. And I think the library's been very generous in pricing these books. And, and I understand that, that you, that it's not, it's not something you want to make a lot of money off of. But if you can get a hardback book that you really want to read for $2, and you can also help Lee County's library, and I think there are few people that wouldn't do that. Or, or $1 for a paperback book. I think right now, we're selling books, Lee County is selling books, a bag of books, or is it a, is it a dollar?
Three dollars.
Three dollars for a whole bag of books. And I think people are willing to pay more than that if they want to read a book. So I think we can actually have a positive financial impact on it. I think most of the most, the more valuable books, I think, are actually donated. I don't think they are surplus Lee County property. I, I, I did not realize how many nice books are being donated to the library. Recent fiction, recent nonfiction, it is remarkable. Recent fiction, recent nonfiction, it is remarkable. We just have a lot of generous people in Lee County. They're donating these books, and I think the Friends of the Lee County Library can accept that donation and pass along every dollar back to the Lee County Library. Two things we did recently that Michael alluded to, there was two live performances for the Summer Reading Program. They cost about $700. I don't think there was money in the budget to do that, but a lot of children enjoy those programs. I don't, maybe some of you know children who participate in the Summer Reading Program. It's a great thing the library does, but they just don't have the funds for all of these performances. That's where the Lee County Library, I mean, the Lee County Friends of the Library come in. So I think there's a lot of good reasons to do this. I went over to a regional Friends meeting with a retired, a board member, Lynn Vigiano of Burlington. They actually have a bookstore run by the Friends of the Library. It's, it is, it is very impressive. They have two one-week book sales a year, and they make thousands of dollars, all passed along to the Alamance County Public Library. And as Mike said, and, and I spoke with Franny Ashburn with the State Library, she said that it is the rule, rather than the exception, for the Friends of the Library to run these book sales, rather than actually county employees. So for all those reasons, I think it's a good idea. Dr. Dodder, Bob Brickhouse, Dick Poile, they all left the Friends in good financial shape. So I'm not going to come up here and say we don't have any money, but when it comes time to maybe building a new library, adding, adding things to the present library, contributing to the live performances and things like that, the Friends of the Library want to be there for Lee County. So, so thank you for listening to us, and I hope you act favorably on this request.
Thank you very much.
If there are any questions about the Friends of the Library, I'll be glad. It's a nonprofit corporation.
All right. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Let you go see Atticus Finch.
Mr. Matocik, just wanted to ask you one question, two, two questions, actually, and really just short answers. Is, is this threshold anything that we need to be concerned about, that is, the exceeding $5,000? I was not quite sure about that as far as.
Yeah, it, it's in the general statute. I, I know Mr. Hoyle knows, and John know, know about that and whatnot, but I just wanted to put that out.
So, so we always will stay within that frame? I mean, we, if, but my question was, if you exceed that. Mr. Hoyle, I was asking if they exceed the $5,000, is that a problem of any kind, or it's just sort of a?
No, he's talking, he's talking about if the value of the books are in excess of $5,000, would they, would, would they not have to come back to the Board and have the Board declare the books as surplus, instead of just allowing the county manager to negotiate or?
Wouldn't you just control the sale, that you would only sell $5,000 or less?
Per event.
Per event.
And I think that's only refers to surplus books too. I don't think donated books we have to get into.
Right.
Well, okay, it's sort of a, just a itch kind of thing, but I just wanted to make sure that we, and I knew Mr. Hoyle would have the answer to that, but I saw in here reading the material that $5,000, I wanted to make sure that we're set good on that. The other question is, books that are discarded for sale, how is that determined?
It's determined by a number of factors. One, for instance, if the dog ate it, kind of thing, it's destroyed in some way, or if it's a book on science or health, and it might be outdated.
Okay.
We will take that off. If it's a, a novel that maybe was exciting two years ago, but it's pretty much at its lifespan, we would take that off and make room for others. It's, getting back to the space concern, we have some shelves there that have some of the greatest authors in the world on the shelf, and we have to go there and take some of them off, and it, it's difficult. But there are different areas where we can do that, and those are the criteria we use. Sometimes if it hasn't been read in a long time, and it's not.
Okay, but you, so you have a way to, sort of criteria that you measure, and some of you look at that and make those determinations, and that's just interesting.
Where do you keep the surplus books?
In the library in different nooks and crannies. We also have generosity of Dr. James Lehman. He has one of his empty offices just up the street. He's given us for that. Also, Mr. Cherry helps us out, and Russell Spivey, in one of their garages, we put things over there as well.
All right. Well, sir.
I just want to point out that, I'm sorry for interrupting here, that, you know, if you give up this revenue, you're going to have to make it up, because it is part of the maintenance of effort calculation. Now, you give it to the Friends of the Library, you hope that they'll give it back to us somehow, some way, but they're, they're wanting to save the money for the, for a capital expenditure. So it may only be $5,000 a year, or some people might say only, but you're going to have to, we're going to have to make it up as part of the maintenance of effort for the library.
Okay. Mr. Oner?
I had, you know, we're talking about taking surplus county property and settlement and giving it to someone else to handle. I mean, I think that should come back to the county coffers themselves.
Okay. Mr. Hoyle?
You know, the contract that we can require that we.
Right.
Accept. Like.
I, I would just say. I'm just watching the money. I would just say one thing that we, that Mike is that, is that it could, this could happen with the, on the condition that the Friends of the Library resolve to return every dollar to the, to the Lee County Library, and I think we're liquid enough that we could do that.
Yeah.
And, and I think we would do it anyway.
In what form?
In the form of whether it's what's needed by the library. I think that, I think that would be for Mr. Matocik to, to assist us with.
So all income would be?
Or dollar.
Would revert?
But it's.
Would be put, would be given to the library.
Given back to the library.
Given back to the library.
We would have to look at the, the state regulations and supplemental money not being used for operational personnel.
I think our concern was up to the $5,000. If they're agreeing to do that, we'd be having nothing that we've ever had.
That's right.
So let them work with the library. Anything over that $5,000 would be done with. I think it's a great idea.
Plus you get a big benefit off the labor costs.
Right. You get staff to do other things. I would move to approve the request.
With that condition in there, right?
Absolutely.
Is that, Mr. Hoyle, any further comments from you? Okay, that's, I, I think that expresses, that's good discussion and prudent budget considerations, and thank you very much, but I think the, well, we'll ask the Board how its pleasure is on this side. We'll ask to vote. All in favor of this Friends of the Library, I'll just say, consideration, okay, authorizing the party to organize and conduct sales of donated and discarded materials and receive revenues for all sales, say aye. Aye. Well, as, as, and as expressed, this is getting convoluted.
Let's just move with the motion.
Let's go with the motion, okay. All in favor of the motion with the conditions that were put to it, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you very much. I, I would like to add one thing, that this is a kind of warm and nice types of things that really make being a Commissioner and working with people like you a real pleasure, because, you know, the library is dear to all of us, and we really do appreciate the hard work that goes in, and we know that we don't have everything we'd like, but, but you work hard, and, and as, as a Commissioner, and I'm sure this probably reflects the others, we thank you greatly for your service, and especially the Friends of the Library, and good luck to you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Okay.
There's going to be a meeting tomorrow at 6:00 for people interested in being a friend of the library, at the library.
We got one, I'm going to send down.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, and we move right along as we sort of come around the final turn. It's time for the Manager's Report. Mr. Crumpton, do you have something?
We have a lot.
I'm sorry.
Actually.
Okay.
Mrs. Menter. Who's going to go over the financial report, and she's going to give us these wonderful sales tax.
All right.
Hope you're wonderful. You're being.
Better than it's been.
Facetious.
It's better.
Okay. You have in front of you the July 2010 financial report. As you can see from that report, we are slightly ahead this year where we were through July of 2009, as far as revenues go. Our property taxes are about 300, about $250,000 ahead of last year, and overall revenues are about just a hair under $500,000 ahead of the same timeframe last year. Of course, we have not received any sales tax for the 2010, 2011 fiscal year yet. Expenditure-wise, we are looking at a target of 8.33%. Most departments are below that. A lot of us are right at that window, are a little bit above. My department is above because of the audit fees that have been paid out. Some others are very close due to a lot of the bills we get at the front end of the year, insurance, these maintenance contracts, et cetera.
Books.
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 The husband reminded me hard about those book purchase orders, so.
Can I ask a quick question on this first page?
Left.
Under the revenue section, investment earnings, I'm curious why we've almost doubled from investment earnings. We budgeted much less than we did last year, so where did that extra $6,000 come from?
It's probably timing of investments. We may have put something out a year or two ago for a little bit longer timeframe and had more come due this timeframe. It could also be a reflection of accrued interest that I need to, that may be an adjustment coming about in the next week or so.
See this each month?
No, I would not count on seeing that much of an increase each month. I wish I could say differently, however, interest rates are not improving that greatly.
That's why I asked, because interest rates were even worse than they were last year, I think, and it's, it was doubled.
A couple of, about two years ago, when we saw the market really starting to drop, we tried to go out with some of our money for a longer term and get it locked in at a better rate, and so we're having some of that come due now. We don't have much else out there at those rates, because they didn't hold long enough for us to do much. Plus, cash flow-wise, we can't take and restrict our cash, but for so long.
Okay. Any other questions?
You also now should have in front of you the sales tax report that shows our collections through the month of May 2010. The month of May did bring in $615,000, or $1,615,508, which is the highest month we have had since December. So that was good news. We are now, am getting pretty close to our targets for the year. I have calculated the receivable that I will book for the remainder of the year, and it will put us very close to 100%. We will not be at 100% of what we have projected, except on the Article 40 sales tax. However, we will be very, very close. And hopefully, the number that we actually get for June will be better than the receivable that I book. However, we use a 11-year, we look at the 11 previous months and average that to look our receivable. Questions on sales tax?
Any questions?
I could be in the office tomorrow afternoon. I have a social services board, and there's always these questions. I'm sure my colleagues know the answers, and so I, instead of wasting their time, I want to sit down with you for about a half hour.
I believe I am, if you would just, if you want to.
Pop in after my social services.
I'll check my schedule in the morning. If I find out there's a problem, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Crumpton, did you have any?
Yes, sir. I just have two items. The EDC has set August 31st at 6:30 PM for our joint meeting. That's required by our new contract with them. Joint meeting with the city and the town, 6:30 at the McSwain Center. They've asked for RSVP, so please get that to Gaynell, and then.
Of course, that's a public meeting. Public's invited to that, okay.
And then next week, Commissioner Dahl Ripple, Ms. Lee and myself will be headed to Greenville for the NCACC meeting, and I called this morning to find out what was on the agenda that Ms. Dahl Ripple might be voting on next week, and there is only one item that she'll be voting on next week, and it's a non-contested race for the second Vice President, and that's it.
That's it?
So no other resolutions have been introduced at this time, and they're not expecting anything right now. So the next really big votes, I guess, will occur in January at the Legislative Goals Conference, so.
That's what, the September 15th, but you think you can get that extended, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, Mr. Crumpton.
Yes, sir.
Would you care to comment at all on the federal stimulus money? I think it could be described as stimulus, but the Medicare, Medicaid package that is being distributed to all the states, does that give you some sense of relief as far as Lee County goes, or is it too early to determine that? In other words, that will help plug a hole, so to speak, at, at the state level, and will that?
That will help the state for this fiscal year.
Okay.
But it, it isn't much help beyond July 1st. Obviously, there's nothing, there'll be very little help beyond July 1st, so.
So, but that means that this present year, we're not likely to suffer unduly because of that lack of funding? In other words, it'll be the year after that that we'll be holding.
It was my understanding that they would not ask for a reversion if they got the money from the feds for the Medicaid. So there'd be no further cuts this year, as long as revenues came as projected. And what we're seeing right now, actually, things may be just a slight better than what they were projecting, so. Right now, I feel okay about this year. I'm anxiously awaiting the spring to see what happens in Raleigh.
Okay.
But it's going to be interesting.
There was something in our consent agenda that I wanted to mention before we close shop and have final comments. It has to do simply with a proclamation that has to do with the Lee County Board of Commissioners proclaiming September 18 to October the 2nd as litter sweep time in Lee County, and it's to encourage citizens to take an active role in making our community cleaner. And I believe this is twice a year that this is undertaken and, and promoted by the State of North Carolina through the Governor's Office and through the Department of Transportation. So it's, it's a noble thing to do, and just to remember those dates, and rather than go through all of the wherethes, it is a fact, and we are aware of it, and I hope the community will take heed and do their part in helping keep our highways and byways clean, especially during this particular period of time. It's time to ask now if there are any comments.
Before you go to the summary, so let, let me, I should have added this as one of the additional items. I spoke with the manager earlier about scattered site housing program, and I don't know if he has that information or not. Okay. I'm, I think we all should be very curious as to how many houses outside of the city limit are being prepared or repaired or rehabilitated or even replaced. The grant that we oversee is not just for people inside the city limits of Sanford and the town of Broadway, it's for the county as well. And I don't have a clue how many county residents have been recipients, and I've asked for that record, so, and I wanted, my request should be part of this meeting, but we ought to at least take a look at if there are folks who live in rural Lee County that need actual help for their homes. Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you. Mr. Reeves, would you care to, do you have any other comments you'd like to make of the General Manager?
Just happy to be here.
Happy to be here.
Yes, sir.
Very good. We're happy to have you. Mr. Kelly?
Ladies and gentlemen.
I just want to say I went to the Dancing with the Stars Saturday night, and first of all, to be able to pull something off like that, I, I want to commend the communities and schools, because that's a lot of work to be done. Jonathan performed well. Margaret usually sits there. Margaret did a really good job, and one of our own, Shane Seagates, did a, a good job. So I just want to say thank you. It's tough sometimes to step out of that comfort zone and get up in front of a crowd full of people, so thanks for doing that.
Okay. Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all very much for your involvement, participation. Thank you all very much for your involvement, participation, and is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved that we adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.